Good evening, everyone. We're still missing a couple of councillors, but I'm going to start the proceedings. I haven't, maybe someone can just text the people who are running a little late to see where they're at. But we'll start the meeting on time. We have Quorum. And out of the respect for the people who are here to present to us tonight, we'll get going. I just, we'll start off by acknowledging that we're having this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Straits Salish people, specifically the Lakewongan-speaking people known today as the Isqwaamult and the Songhees First Nations. And their connections to these lands continue to these days, to this day. And also, just for those in the audience, we do livestream and archive the video footage of this meeting, so just for your awareness that if you come forward and speak, that will be on the livestream. We have a very simple agenda tonight. We're just day one of our financial planning process. We've done some strategic planning, but we have a number of items to go through tonight. I note that we have members of the Oak Bay Tourism Committee here. That, and I think just their presentation is probably the simplest of the things we have to go through tonight. And as we don't have a set agenda, we can just invite them to come forward first if you wish to do that. Recognizing it's not the most pleasant evening to be showcasing Oak Bay, but we'll do our best in a warm room.
Pleasant week. It's been a week. Thank you.
And for those who are used to coming and going to different meetings, this is a committee of the whole meeting, so we are slightly less formal than we are in other, in our usual council meetings, which sits more as a legislative body. We're here really to have discussions, but not to make decisions tonight. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Mayor Murdock and councillors, my name's Duncan Murphy. I'm the owner of the Oak Bay Guesthouse, vice chair of the Oak Bay Tourism Committee. This is Brian Dolson, he's our treasurer. It's my pleasure to present the Oak Bay Tourism 2020 Budget and Strategic Plan. So, we can start off with our overall direction is to attract visitors to Oak Bay by marketing our distinct attributes. And if I just go back to that, it is a very easy job because it is such a beautiful place. And you can see here we have hotels, spa pools, golf courses, shops, parks, and much, much more. Our main overall goals and objectives are to bring in more visitors, increase overnight expenditure, have a positive connection between the locals and the visitors. Authentic experiences is always high on the agenda for any visitor. And to engage the visitors to experience Oak Bay. Beautiful as it is, there's Marina. So in our first three shots, we've got coast, beaches, parks, marinas, everything. And we're very close to the downtown. Our committee is made up of eight community members. You'll probably recognize most of those names. Michelle is the general manager of the Oak Bay Beach Hotel. Brian is sitting next to me here. And the others are all members of the community who are still or have been involved in tourism over, over the years. Our council liaisons, we're very happy to have Karyn, Green, and Hazel Braithwaite. We're very lucky and happy to have them come and support us and liaise with council. Okay, I'm not going to read all of this. We're funded by, by the tourism tax that we collect. It's collected mainly through, well, through the, through the beach hotel, the Oak Bay Guesthouse. It's a 2% tax, and that comes to the municipality, and it's claimed back by the committee. And we put together this plan to, to spend, help spend the money on bringing more tourism in. The only thing different here this year is that Airbnb have now, registered Airbnbs are also contributing to this, beginning in June 2019. Again, our strategies, this is like this year, we, what was also new this year is that we employed a marketing agency, Hot House Marketing. And most of our expenditure goes on to those. And this is their, in conjunction with us, the strategies that we're using to spend that money. A large part of it goes on digital presence. We've upgraded the website and social media. We've done, we're going to go into that a little bit more in detail. The digital part takes up a large part of the budget because it's so important these days, and you can, you can actually analyze it and see the return on your investment quite easily. We also do fam tours, we do traditional media advertising, and we work with Destination Greater Victoria and the VGSN Network to, we lever, they're already bringing people into Victoria, so we are working with them just to move them over to, to Oak Bay. We've updated a lot of our video and photo assets because they were getting out of date. No disrespect to Mayor Murdock, who used to provide, provide some of those. We still use some of his. But the agency is taking photos year-round in all of the seasons. One of our pushes is to, you know, particularly on shoulder seasons where we have the most opportunity to improve occupancy, so they're, they're taking photos not just in the summer of the lovely beaches, but also in fall and spring to try to get our numbers up in those, and winter, to get our numbers up in those times of the year as well. Our main target markets are actually from Vancouver Island, the lower mainland, and Washington State, and Alberta, still. And our average length of stay is two to three days. This is, oh yeah, one of the things that we started with, or the agency started with, was updating the logo. I've talked about the assets, the media. The logo was considered a little bit out of date, and the, the caption, is it? The, what is it called, the caption? It used to be called...
Picture Perfect.
Picture Perfect, and people thought we were a photo framing company or something, but now we've updated it to actually reflect what we are. You can see some of those lovely images. And there was a fantastic video that was presented to council, I believe, before, and that is available to view on the website. More lovely photos. I think that one in the bottom right is the car show, maybe? The visit, the market, the market, yes, yes. Okay, so back to the digital, no, the achievements, the digital ad campaigns, we had three major ones. They went out to two and a half million people, almost, 14,000 clicks back to the Oak Bay Tourism page. The website was all updated as well. And there was actually, I think they did a new landing page for the website to maximize the efficiency, and 1,500 clicks straight through to stakeholders on our website, including the hotel and some of the local businesses. The main sort of big three, Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. I think we have quite a big, well, we do have a big presence on all of those. You can see some of the interactions there. Again, 220,000 impressions, Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. Don't ask me what the difference between the reach and the impressions is, because I'm still not quite sure. I think, I think it's number of times viewed, and impressions might be slightly higher because, than reach, because reach, sometimes you look at something twice or something like that. Other achievements. Yeah, this is more the traditional print media, so we still have a big presence in, in some of the publications that come out around Vancouver Island and with the newspapers, Times Colonist, WestJet Magazine, I think was a new one. Seattle is also a big target market, and we've, we've put ads such as the one you can see there into some of Seattle's publications. And we do partner with, or we don't partner, we promote on their radio station. I think there was a big marriage vows renewal competition, and people come to Oak Bay and they stay at the beach hotel, and they get food and drink and breakfast and so on and so forth, and they get to use those lovely spa pools. This was our map that was done in previous years, so we ran out of copies of this, so it was reprinted. So another 10,000 copies were reprinted. It wasn't completely redone, but it's distributed at the visitor centers, airports, through the hotels, ferries, and at the trade shows and so on and so forth. So that just gives more detail of what's available on the avenue and in Estevan and around this area. Stakeholder engagement goes on for quite a few pages, so I'm going to skip through this. This was one, I think, Hot House helped update or work with this, the poster, the Arts and Culture Days, and we supported that with the advertising in the Times Colonist. We presented at the VGSN Network. We hosted Mixer at the Marina Restaurant. We hosted Arts Alive, and we had the tour, was back at the Oak Bay Beach Hotel. We actually sponsored the winning Arts Alive sculpture, which was that whale just across the road. And we participated in, with the BIA Mixer at the Penny Farm. I think that means we went and drank their beer and ate their sandwiches and mingled, and we donated to the mayor's art legacy fund, Mayor Nill's Art Legacy Fund, and Jill Croft's Memorial Fund. We, we support the Car Festival, the very popular Car Festival, which is huge, run by, and thanks to Ken, Ken Agus, Ken Aggett for that. He's been doing that for years. He's a member of our committee. The TVI Conference, yeah, that was Tourism Vancouver Island Conference. We sent delegates to that in the Niimo. And I actually went to that, and I was amazed that I spent so much time in Oak Bay and in my guesthouse that I was actually excited about spending a night in the Niimo, getting, getting out of town. But that was a good conference. The, and we sent people to participate in the golf tournament. We didn't pay for that, we paid for that ourselves. The Tourism Committee didn't pay for that, but we had a presence there. Can you all see that? And scan through it? I'm not going to read it all out. We, I think this is the last one, the Destination Greater Victoria, Greater Victoria's Open House, that's right, they open up their house, we would go down there. Tractings Victoria, Oak Bay Beach Hotel run a shopping package in the, just coming up to Christmas, I believe. The Urban Wildlife Stewardship Society is the deer program or something? I'm not quite sure. And, yeah, we updated the website. Okay, so getting forward to 2020, one of the big initiatives, we are partnering with Francophone Games, and we are helping to sponsor that. There's been lots of activity there, and lots of meetings, and people coming in, and you know, that's a huge thing for Oak Bay. That takes place in July, I believe. And that will be thousands of Francophone students coming into Oak Bay and staying here and using their facilities. The fam tours in the spring and the fall, we bring in media influencers and people who write in magazines and on social media to experience what we have. We partner with, yeah, we bring in the VGSN people on a tour, that's going to take place soon, and take them around Oak Bay so they know what they are talking about when visitors come into the visitor center. And more social media publications, I think we've been over some of these things already. And the online presence, which we've already talked about on social media. Going, looking forward to the budget, we have a large carry forward from 2019. I think our revenues were higher than expected. This was predicted to be a slow season. It's an attribute to Oak Bay that we actually were ahead of last season where the rest of tourism was down. I think that mainly comes from the beach hotel. We also have, that, that figure there includes some money already allocated but not yet spent, so some of that, for example, the Francophone Games, there's $20,000 or $30,000 that has been allocated, but we didn't, it didn't come out of last year's budget. And the other thing was that Hot House came on in April to May, not at the beginning of the year, so they came in later in the year. And so that, that whole cycle hasn't gone around yet. I'm going to defer to the questions to Brian because he's the treasurer, and he's going to field those afterwards, and if you have any questions about that. So our total revenue, expected revenue for 2020, or expenses, I mean, would be the marketing, which is the Hot House Agency, which is the same figure as last year. And meeting, I think the Destination and Product Experience Management, I do, that includes things like trade shows, supporting local events, industry development, training and donations. And the meetings, events, stakeholder management and other includes that Francophone Games sponsorship, meetings, conference fees, and something else which I have just, which I can't see. And our contingency, so our total expected expense is 223,500 with a contingency of And I do have details of what that 150,000 is spent on, or how that's broken down. I don't know why that slides there, but I do have that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I think it's important to point out that, as you rightly pointed out at the beginning of this, this is, this budget, well, we, I think, have to sign off on it, is money that you accrue by yourselves and spend by yourselves, and we essentially act as the conduit through which that is, that is passed, so it doesn't have any impact on taxes or, or any other nature, that's, that's part of this program. But thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions of the presenters at this time? Yes, Councillor Braithwaite?
Thank you, thank you so much for your presentation. One quick question, you talked a little bit about the Airbnbs now having to register and give their 2% towards the MDRT. Do you know how many are actually registered within Oak Bay, or we don't know that number?
I don't know, but Brian...
We don't know, but we asked our good friend there to help us try and invade the provincial government and find out that number, because technically there is none.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, I have contacted the province, but still waiting for some information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just a couple of comments, more than questions. One, I, I thought the, the video that was shared was really indicative of what can be done, particularly just highlighting some of the events and things that go on. I think those have largely gone undocumented, and I think both from a sort of recognition of the, of the work that goes into those and the celebrations that happen, very positive. Look forward to more of those sorts of capturing of those events as they go on. I also just want to raise the fact that there is a, one of the events coming up with some municipal ties is the BC Association Police Board Conference coming up in March, and that'll be at the, at the hotel. And it just reminds me that we should make sure that we have tourism information circulated to those, to the people attending before they arrive here, so. Any other comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, I guess we'll take a motion to, to receive the presentation, it's probably appropriate. Councillor Green?
I'll move to accept the presentation.
Yeah, just receipt, yes.
Second, receipt.
Any further discussions, seeing none, all's in favor? Oh, yes.
Just one thing, I just want to say thank you very much. I know that Corinne and I really enjoyed being a part of the, part of the committee, but the work that you're also doing with the BIA, I think it's wonderful that those two committees are kind of doing some things together, and it's, it just really helps augment how beautiful our municipality is and the work that you two did do together, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Councillor Green?
Just following up on, on Councillor Braithwaite's comment about the BIA, I have sent an email out to everyone concerned and hoping for a joint meeting between the BIA executive and the Tourism Committee executive in the very near future. I also want to echo Councillor Braithwaite's comments that it's a real joy working with you, and it's a very well-run committee, and you do a lot for us. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, thank you very much for coming out tonight. I'm going to turn this over to staff now. We have the presentation from the Director of Corporate Services, Christopher Payne. And Ms. Vella, would you like to introduce, or should I just leave it to Mr. Payne? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Dolson.
Thank you, your worship. Pleased to be here today to present the first half of the 2020 Financial Plan for Council Consideration. First, I'd like to start out by extending my, my strong appreciation to our Communications Department for all the work they put in leading up to today and presenting the materials in a legible way that's supposed to communicate what the numbers mean. I always say that the, the finances are only as good as we can communicate them, so I just wanted to express my, my gratitude for the, the contribution from the Communications So we'll talk, I'm just going to go over what the agenda for today will be. When we actually get into the operating budget, I'm going to bounce around a little bit just out of the interest of the time of the folks that are over here from Vancouver for, for the IT budget, but otherwise, we're going to follow this, this agenda here. First of all, we'll have a bit, a bit of chat about budget principles, and back in November, we talked about how we would go about preparing the budget and the budget principles used to prepare that budget, so we'll have a refresher there. We'll talk about the budget process and timeline. I'll go over a high-level overview of the financial plan and what the draft means in terms of the financial impact to the community as it stands right now. Well, we've already done that, we've already done number four, so we're on our way. And we'll talk about council and other special initiatives, and we've, we've had two recent council meetings to discuss special initiatives, so it won't be a, a long discussion unless there's a lot of comments or questions from, from council or the public. And then we'll go into operating budget presentations, and we're planning to go through half of the operating budgets today, half of the operating budgets a week from today, and then it'll be, and then we'll be going into capital budgets around February 20th. So the budget principles that we wanted to discuss today, we'll start with a five-year financial plan, and staff really wanted to present a financial plan to, to council and the public that really represented the financial realities over the next five years. So we put a lot of care and, and effort into ensuring that the financial plan that we've presented represents the impact over the five years. And that will help council put the long-term decisions into context. So we ask council to pay close attention to years 2020 and 2021 in particular, because the principle here is that if, if council approves a five-year financial plan, as we're required to before May 15th, as soon as January 1st, 2021 comes around, staff will assume that the expenditures for 2021 in that bylaw are authorized, and we will continue working as such. So the projects will continue, the regular operations will continue. So that's, that's the message from the Finance Department to the rest of the team. Don't be gun-shy when it comes to spending and delivering on, on the services and initiatives that council has directed in the 2020, 2020 Financial Plan, leading into 2021. Council obviously has an opportunity to tweak that financial plan at any point, and, and this, you know, annually, this is really what it should be, an opportunity for council to tweak the five-year financial plan, update the economics, and redirect priorities. So again, the message from the Finance Department to, to the rest of the team here is, if you've got a, a project that's been approved in the 2019 Financial Plan, a capital project or an operating initiative, please continue with that project. It's presumed that, that expenditure authority continues, and council's desire is for that to continue, even as we go into the budget deliberations to tweak the plan. We've done a little bit of tweak into our funding strategy this year. The main difference is that we are funding our special initiatives from accumulated surplus, and we'll talk a bit more about that when we get to the special initiatives. And I, I mentioned it before, but I'll just sort of reiterate, accumulated surplus is a result of favorable financial operations over the years. So if we underspend in any given year, or we, or we receive additional revenues in any given year, we accumulate funds as a result of that. It's just an accumulated surplus year after year. So it, it's a pot that sits there, but it's finite, and it's not sustainable, right? We're not supposed to budget for a surplus, so we can't, we can't budget to grow that pot. So we use that pot because it's a result of previous operating, previous operating results to fund operating initiatives that are one-time in nature. And you'll see when we get to the special initiatives, we're proposing about $2 million in such expenditures over the five years, or $1.2 million all sort of crammed into year 2020. And so council needs to consider use of that because it is a finite pot. But I'll, I'll express my opinion as to the sustainability of that and to the financial risk related to that. We'll talk about that when we get to the special initiative section. As best as possible, we've wanted to incorporate the concepts of life cycle costing. I'm going to pick on a couple new capital items in our budget. I'll, I'll, I'll comment on the Carnarvon Park Building, for instance. There's a $5 million expenditure in the five-year capital plan for construction of the Carnarvon Park Building. But when council agrees to construct that building, it's indirectly agreeing to much more than $5 million, so you're agreeing to the operating costs of that building over the type, the entire lifecycle of that building. And so as best as possible, we would like to quantify and demonstrate what the cost of that new capital is over the entire lifecycle of that building, so that council can be fully informed when they, when you make that decision. Because capital, although the construction of capital comes from reserves, the operating of that capital will have to be tax-supported if we want it to continue in the future. So that's just a brief example of lifecycle costing. We don't, in version one, we don't have a lot of good examples there, but we're hoping to populate a section in version two, not version two, because that'll be published tomorrow, version three, that will show the operating impact of some capital decisions. Most of your cap, just so you know, most of your capital, when you go to replace it, there's no operating impact because it's already, that capital service is already in existence, and so we've already built in the operating cost to support that capital. But when you have a brand-new piece of capital, a brand-new capital service, that increases your operating cost. We've tried our best to improve the financial plan transparency, and we've really tried to ensure that the numbers tell a story and a narrative and paint a picture of the financial condition and the services that are provided for, for that. So we welcome comments from the public or from council to continually improve transparency, and we think that we've taken some, some good steps forward in that regard this year. And, and lastly, but shouldn't be a surprise, this is a recurring thing, we want to make sure that the financial plan provides a long-term vision for council's priorities and service levels. So I'll go over briefly the budget process and how we go about populating the financial plan. And contrary to popular belief, it's not, it's not about how much you lobby the CFO, there's really three main ways about how things appear in the financial plan. The first is council approves service levels. Now, I recognize that we don't have a, a great populated list of service levels that have been established. You'll, you'll see in one of the appendixes, the appendices, pardon me, in the financial plan, we've developed park service levels. And if we go there, maybe we can have a look at that at the next meeting, since we're discussing parks, rec and culture at the next meeting. You will see all of the parks that the Parks Department maintains and to what quality level. And council should have the option of varying that. Council says to, to staff, oh, we really would like to see greater care on Carnarvon Park. You should be able to say that, and, and staff will implement that with the financial costs associated with that. So the, the assumption here is that the service that we provided last year, we're going to continue that unless council says that they want to see a reduction or an increase in that service. So we, we've quantified the cost of those service levels, and that's how those have appeared in the financial plan. Secondly, we will incorporate council-directed initiatives. We've done our best to, to incorporate both the one-time and the operating costs of the initiatives that council has put a lot of effort into developing over the last couple of years. The January 30th meeting, we didn't make the cutoff for getting some of those initiatives in the version one, but you will see evidence of, of those new initiatives in version two as, as well, so you'll see those. And then point number three would be staff interpretation of action needed to implement council endorsement. And then point number three would be staff interpretation of action needed to implement council-endorse plans. So when council endorses a master plan, let's say the Parks Rec and Master Plan, which will be under development soon if council approves funding for that, the actions and objectives of that plan, staff interpret as being the intent of council to implement. So we'll bring forward options for how to implement such plans, and they'll show up in the financial plan as needed. So again, I'd like to just sort of emphasize that staff's role isn't to unilaterally increase or decrease service levels. So, you know, we need to be honest about what it costs to to deliver a service. And and if we believe that funding has been cut in such a way that it impacts service, we communicate that, and it and it ends up being a service-level decision to council. We have lots of great staff who want to provide fantastic service to the community. And sometimes we want to get carried away. We want to provide better service than really what the funding provides for. Again, that decision really right, really should be with council. And so we're going to do our best through the financial planning process to empower council to make those decisions. Oh, that was quick here. Okay. All right, so what I'm going to suggest, if if it meets the expectations of the chair, is to really welcome public input at every stage. We'll have a number of presentations, and I suggest we can stop at any any point after the presentation opening up for council questions and also public public questions. So I'll I'll leave that to the discretion of the chair, but we're really comfortable with these budget deliberations being quite interactive throughout the process. So the way that we've developed this financial plan, I think you you might feel like it's a one-eighty from last year, rather than starting from scratch and building and building and building, and now we have our financial plan. We started from a place of what we're calling the entire financial plan, in draft form, of course, and then we leave it to council to change it as as you see fit. So it's really, the starting point is the full picture, not adding up to the full picture, as as I think you previously previously experienced. And one thing I'd just like to emphasize makes it easier for me is that if we want to see changes to the financial plan, I really would like to see that as council direction, so not councilor direction. And and I need to, I need to ensure that that what makes it into the financial plan is objective that way, and and is not serving the vision of one member of council or another, it's really serving all of council. So if there's substantive change that you want to see, I would invite you to to ask for that in the form of a resolution and and seek support from your colleagues at the council table. So that's, so that really leads me to the next point, is the assumption of informal approval. The financial plan as presented today and and over the next three budget deliberation meetings, we'll 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 take council director committee direction to adjust that budget as you see fit. And then that will result in your financial plan bylaw, and that gets rolled up into a much higher level in the form of the financial plan bylaw. So if you haven't directed us to change the draft in any way, or or you've limited your your direction, whatever results from that will show up in the financial plan bylaw. And we're going to make sure that we have some good version control. Before, we've seen some, I I I do this to the the communications department every single year, I drive them crazy. It's my fault. I I filter so many new versions through them, they have a really tough time keeping up with the changes, and and I take full responsibility for that. In terms of the public versions, we will make sure that we title every new version with a new version number, so you know where you're at. And at the beginning of every budget deliberation meeting, we will go over the changes slight as as they may be. And by the way, if you notice, things that need to be fixed in the financial plan, spelling errors, even addition errors, which I shouldn't be saying as an accountant, but even addition errors, by all means, let me know, and and some members of council have, and I have appreciated it, the more eyes, the better. We we really prioritize getting as much content out into the public eye and to some degree to the detriment of of the perfection, so. So our timeline is as follows, today is the first operating budget meeting. February thirteen will be the second, February twentieth will be, we'll start with a bit of capital assets and and asset management discussion, and March twelve will complete with capital assets and and we'll wrap it up. If if council feels that that's enough discussion, time for discussion. The capital budget, actually, I find, takes longer because it's usually project-focused, so we go one at a time through the projects and and discuss them, whereas the operating budget is is meant to demonstrate status quo services, so it it's can be much easier, but this will be my first experience with this council, so I'm excited to see where it leads. And then April through May, we'll have bylaw adoption. If if at May, May twelfth, we've got sort of a final version of the financial plan endorsed by this committee, then I can bring a financial plan bylaw forward for first, second, third reading in early April and actually get probably one council meeting ahead in case for contingency, we need to change something. So in terms of public input, we have, as you're aware, there's a a questionnaire available to to residents to fill out until February thirteenth, and the findings will be reported out before the final budget. And the early public input indicates that most respondents would like to see existing service levels maintained and not decreasing any service levels, and increase the management of deer population, the development of land use policies. Sorry for the jumping around here, the regulation, the regulation of vacation rentals and the regulation to protect the environment and the management of of road pavement. So I think you'll see a lot of alignment in those themes with the financial plan, and also with the the initiatives that council asked to be included in the financial plan on January thirtieth. It's interesting. So I'm just going to go over the financial plan at a very high level right now, and and then and then we'll pause and we'll get into the operating budgets, answer some questions. So the five, the five-year operating expenditures forecast is over two hundred and twenty million dollars in operating expenditures between now and the end of twenty twenty-four, so significant investment in this community. And the five-year capital expenditures are estimated to be nearly seventy million dollars. Sixteen, just a caveat, sixteen million of that is contingent on grant funding, so that's your your sewer separation, upland sewer separation. And five million would be contingent on borrowing, that would be for Carnarvon Park building construction. And forty-eight million dollars would come from reserves. So before I I carry on there, you know, eyebrow might might raise forty-eight million dollars in reserves, that's a lot of money, that's almost all that we have in reserves right now. But you'll see through your direction over the past number of years, there's significant reserve contributions forecast for that five years, and I'll demonstrate the impact of the reserve contributions and the reserve and using of the reserves for capital projects as forecasted in the financial plan. I just want to pause and provide a little, a little nugget of of the progress that this council has made in in terms of asset management funding, so infrastructure replacement funding. And in two thousand and eighteen, first of all, let me explain. We as staff got together and we estimated on a very high level, subject, of course, to many factors, what we think the sustainable infrastructure funding should be on an annual basis. So that essentially is, how much money should we be setting aside every single year so that our reserves never go negative when we have to replace their infrastructure, and so that we didn't ever have to borrow for existing infrastructure? So we did, we we did a very high-level calculation, and it's certainly certain to, it's certainly subject to a lot of variables, but we thought nine point two million dollars was was around the right number, right number. So we compare the 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 funding that council has provided historically and 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 the trend. And in two thousand and eighteen, we estimated that we were about at fifty-nine percent of that funding, so significantly shorter, which which means we would have to, at some point, reduce the service levels on maintaining those assets, so just be okay with roads in worse condition and higher risk in our pipes and what have you, or take on debt. In twenty nineteen, there was a significant increase by this council in into the infrastructure funding, in fact, I believe it set aside three percent of taxes, and that increases the sustainable funding level from fifty-nine percent to sixty-nine percent. And in my experience, that's tremendous progress, actually. The twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four financial plan estimates another large jump this year. If council so chooses, another three percent jump would put us into the eighty-two percent range. And then it moderates a little bit, but through the next couple of years, we can get up to about ninety-nine percent of our estimated sustainable funding, right? There's your sustainable funding levels. Of course, those those estimates are subject to change, but that provides a a bit of a overview. And we'll demonstrate in the in the following slides what that means in terms of tax increases if council wants to do that that fast. So again, I just wanted to demonstrate the progress that this council has made through its decisions in by asset class. So you see in twenty eighteen, and you go down that column and you go through all the asset classes, most of the funding for those asset classes, they're red, right? They're not good. And it's funny to describe your, let's say, a report card for sustainable infrastructure funding. You know, I I would contend that anything less than a hundred percent is a failing grade, but it's a worse failing grade than, say, seventy-nine percent. So however you want to interpret that, by all means. But you notice our average, again, was fifty-nine percent in in twenty eighteen, and that got bumped up to six sixty-eight percent. If the recommendations in the financial plan are are approved for twenty twenty, many of many of those asset classes move into a much more safer zone for sustainable funding. In fact, three asset classes are are our vehicles will be a hundred percent sustainably funded, and will be very close for sewer and doing not so well, or doing not so bad in in other categories.
I'm just going to allow this as a question, councillor Green.
Thank you through you, Mayor, too. Mr. Payne, just a question on the water. So water appears to be failing right through that table. Can you just comment on that, Mr. Payne? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. The 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 water sustainable funding, it is increasing at at a large pace and and a fast pace. This year, council opted in the the water rates by law to increase revenue enough such that an additional hundred thousand could be put into the water reserves. So if you look there, twenty twenty nineteen was sixty-four percent, that jumped by eight percent just by that one decision to add an extra hundred thousand. So the starting point was a little bit further behind than the other assets, which is why it hasn't caught up as fast. But the water rates are are increasing at a pace such that that asset is is catching up rather quickly.
Councillor Green.
And just supplementary through you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Payne. Can you just clarify for the public what that means in simple terms, in terms of water sustainability? Thank you.
Sure, and if you don't, if you don't mind, I'll I'll defer for for some comment from the Director of Engineering. However, the the water budget, water capital budget is mostly composed of water main replacement. And so the majority of that funding goes to replacing the water, the water mains in a reasonable timeframe. There's CCTV being conducted on on water mains, or no, on on the other assets?
Mr. Horen, welcome.
Thank you, your worship, through you, Chair. I I think the the best way to put this in a context is is the council has made some decisions in the past based on incomplete information, but the the best advice from the staff was the funding levels were not sustainable to to maintain levels of service in sewer, water, roads, and and the various other factors, so what Director of Financial Services is trying to show is that those decisions, you know, are heading the district in the right direction, and there's there's a ton of work to be done to turn these, the past funding decisions and future proposed funding decisions into actual water main projects and sewer mains, but we're, but the district is heading in the right direction. So so the first step is, set a target on what sustainable asset funding is, and then turn that into action in terms of capital project planning, and then and then deliver you those capital projects. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
Yes, thank you. And just a quick comment, I think for the clarification for the public, it would be helpful if by water you added a bracket, the way you have on vehicles, just saying water mains. I don't think the average citizen might think about water mains, they would think about water supply. So I think that would be helpful for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you very much. So now we'll just go, and this is a bit of an exhaustive list, but it really does show, it does summarize on a high level, the capital expenditures and where the financial plan proposes the investment be. It is significant investment. So in twenty twenty, the the financial plan proposes twelve point two million dollars in capital expenditures, one point three million of that for municipal hall refurbish, two point zero dollars, two point zero million for fire apparatus, equipment and building replacement, one point one million of roads, seven hundred thousand in drainage, and three hundred thousand in transportation safety improvements. An additional one point nine million in public works vehicle and equipment, and this this amount is it's a, it's higher than you would normally expect in any given year. Much of that, I would say, almost half of that is really carryover funding of replacement that council's already approved in twenty nineteen, plus a little bit of catch-up, and and you'll see in twenty twenty-one, that number goes back back down. The annual amount that really needs to be set aside for vehicles is around three hundred and fifty thousand. So that that, you know, correlates somewhat to what you should see in a capital expenditure annual plan. So in addition to that, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for Oak Bay Rec Center roof, which is recently approved by council, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the transformer, three hundred and five thousand dollars for Carnarvon Park design. So that's the actual park, not not the building, eight hundred and seventy thousand in sewer main and eight hundred thousand in water main. And again, the the sewer main and the water main are are a little bit higher than the than the normal budget. Maybe not the water main, but the sewer main is because some funds have been carried carried over. And that carryover, you know, budgeting philosophy really empowers staff to just get get the work done, right? So that's so they're looking forward to that continuity of of service provision. In twenty twenty-one, the financial plan proposes thirteen point six million in capital expenditures. Four hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is for Marina structural repairs, two million for our ladder truck replacement, one point three million in pavement, four hundred thousand dollars in transportation safety improvement, five point four million in sewer for the sewer upland separation, that's just a portion of the project, which is estimated to be twenty-two million, and two hundred thousand dollars in active transportation. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand, so here's an example of the public works vehicles and equipment sort of normalizing. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Oak Bay Rec Center parking lot, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the air unit, eighty thousand for playground, five hundred and ten thousand for sewer main, and eight hundred thousand for water main replacement. So then, you know, lastly, on this presentation, I just wanted to summarize these capital expenditures on a high level for all five years, so you, so we're able to communicate to the public the total impact and investment in a certain category for the entire five years, and it's and it's it's powerful, that communication. So the five-year financial plan anticipates one point six million in Marina structural repairs, four point eight million in total for fire equipment and apparatus, two point three million transportation safety improvements. So that's that's significant for that category, eight million in pavement, again, very significant, and twenty-three million dollars for the sewer separation, and one million dollars for active transportation. So we can, we can get a significant amount of work done for that, three point three million dollars in public works vehicles, equipment, replacement.
Mr. Payne, just a second, just have a question from councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, if I could just just verify that where there are capital projects, that there will be, they will have an impact on the operating budgets. The, that will be factored then into the operating budget for either that year or the following year that the project work takes place, is that correct?
Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you, most certainly. So far, staff have identified very few capital projects where that's the case. Carnarvon Park is is one example, but the expenditure for that is at the end, at the tail end of the financial plan, so you don't see the impact of that. We haven't analyzed whether the active transportation or the transportation safety improvements would would incrementally change the operating expenditures. We suspect no at at this stage, but certainly when when we become aware of that, it gets integrated. Another example is, on the thirtieth, council asked for for electric vehicle stations to be included in the financial plan. There, there's an example of something that clearly does impact the operating, and it has been integrated. it has been integrated into version two so continuing the five-year capital snapshot five million for Conarven Park two million altogether for the roof not just the portion that was approved for twenty twenty three million in stormwater three million in sewer main four point three million in water main so significant investment that the the public would benefit if approved so when I was putting together the the capital plan probably thinking the same thing you were what does this do to our long-term financial position and this is this is what happens to our reserves through those five years so we start with forty-seven point six million dollars in reserves and we end up with forty-three point five million dollars in reserves so you see as reserve contributions scale up and capital expenditures get done our reserves start to rebalance and the the main synopsis here is for a net decrease in four point two million in reserves over five years we can accomplish seventy million in capital expenditures so not all bad we want to we want to see the reserve balances continue to climb but it's totally appropriate for them to decline in in times of of catch up and and replacement it's supposed that's the whole point of reserves supposed to be a bit volatile so the tax rates don't have okay so that's capital I just was gonna briefly talk about special initiatives but I'm thinking I'm thinking let's save that conversation if it pleases the chair I'd like to pause now and invite any questions about the overview and then if there are no questions or when questions are done we'd like to get into the operating budget and talk about finance and IT because our our IT consultants are here
absolutely let's do that and I am I've got a questions from the from the committee at this point I I'll go to councillor first but I just wanna start by expressing my appreciation for the financial plan and the amount of detail that's in it I it made me rethink the the approach we might take in future for for these sorts of meetings having that level of detail and explanation in written form it's such clarity for both council and for the public is extraordinarily helpful in terms of understanding what the what the financial planning is so I appreciate the presentation we'll go through questions here I just want to make that make that comment first so thank you for all your work for I see members of the financial team here and from the communications group and administration because it's it's changed the nature of the ability to understand these things in context and I think it's very positive councillor Green
thank you mayor and through you I just have three questions related to the survey I took the survey as well and it was very useful just a couple of questions what was the response rate on the survey Mr Payne thank you
Ms Rela I think has or Ms Bay
Ms Bay thank you
through the chair at this point we're close to two hundred and fifty responses which is significantly up from last year where we're just shy of a hundred so it's still open for another week so we're hoping to get additional responses through that time now that the financial plan is up and available for inspection we're hoping that will give people the information that they need in order to respond so as Mr Payne highlighted we're getting some good feedback and it's interesting to see the alignment of some of the early feedback with some of council's directions from the past couple of weeks so we will monitor that information and bring back a report to council with results on that well before you're making your final budget decisions
thank you Ms Bay
thank you second question through you mayor on the survey is there a way to reach people that aren't online who would be anxious to participate
Ms Bay
thank you
is there softball questions or is it easy
through through the through the mayor yes there is absolutely an opportunity to fill out paper versions as well they're available here at municipal hall and people are welcome to fill those out and once they're filled out we will make sure that they're also part of what gets reported back to council
that's great thank you and just one last comment and I appreciate you're answering my questions thank you I think from my perspective having taken the survey it might be helpful at the very beginning to have sort of a preamble context statement about just about our situation generally and why we're doing it and and how this will inform our decision-making going forward but it was a really you know the questions are very straightforward it kicked me out a couple of times and I think that was probably a glitch or maybe it had something against me I don't know but oh they knew I was a councillor yeah anyway I really appreciated the the survey and I know the public appreciates having that opportunity to to participate so thank you very much
thank you councillor Green councillor Patterson
thank you mayor and I certainly echo your comments I you know the certainly all of the staff and Mr Payne and all of the staff in the financial department I I realize put a lot of effort into bringing this together for us in such detailed and clear format for this presentation and it's really appreciated when I look at this and certainly the recommendations are valid but one thing that comes to mind is managing expectations we there is certainly in this plan recommendation to invest significantly more than what we've seen in the past but we do have we have years of deficit of infrastructure funding to make up for and so last year we had about a just over an eight percent increase in taxes and over the next few years we're going to have significant increase in taxes so how do people how do residents in the community understand that for people who are saying great they're going to be putting all of this funding into capital and it's wonderful but what does that mean for the roads on my street you know when what will their expectation be that you know they may look at this and think oh good they're going to be fixed next year or within eighteen months and I think it's it's a fair assumption but maybe we it would be good to have some remarks on that
I just for remarks in the meeting here or in the
well I you know I think and I don't know if it's Mr Payne that would reply to that or if it's if it's the engineering but I think the thing is that this is still a long-term game this isn't this isn't a miracle it's going to fix things overnight and I I'm not sure that that message is is as clear in the presentation as all of the financial information is
and this ties back to the whole asset management tie into the to the to the financial plan management if there's any anybody wants to make a comment you're welcome to
yes your worship I'll make a brief comment and then Mr Haran can can compliment that I would say I absolutely agree really the first stage of asset management is securing the funding to do that asset management and then following shortly after that should really be a detailed plan of where we want to spend those funds and what will result from that and that's really that's what's that's what's really needed so so we can communicate to the to the to the public what our what our priorities are in terms of investing that infrastructure replacement funding
and through your chair just to add on to that comment that what's in the draft financial plan that's in front of you now follows from council direction a year ago and multiple years ago and so that the asset management planning the program and all the discussions and decisions that go into that and previous strategic priorities priorities and budget decisions all feed into what's in front of you now so so they they work in concert together and so now in the future there there's more work to be done around how to deliver on these results and what are the levels of service and how do you measure success in these various expansion of capital works so it's a cyclical process and the part that's in front of us right now is the enabling factor for us to go ahead and start planning how to deliver on those results
thank you Mr Haran is there any of the questions for the presentation to this point I just have one question and that's just the appreciate the this is a largely a financial plan of what's going to be what we're setting aside not so much what we're spending but I also recognize that these are not like what we spend is not necessarily linearly the value that we get out of it and sometimes being getting more in front and and the director of engineering you know raised the point that you know a lot of these crews are off doing emergency work or pull-off work you know thirty-three percent of the time and that's the inefficiencies that come with that sort of coming back and forth on site and and not being able to dedicate the time to things that those those sort of impacts are quite really quite significant not to mention the the little added value of fixing hundred-year-old pipes with a small patch of new pipe so I guess the other part of this question is is at what point is the analysis gonna happen in this process where we're starting to make decisions about maybe borrowing or getting in front of that so we can get in front of those sort of break fix issues and 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 deal with more things more more at the front end and getting away you know we have a chance of having significant multipliers in that investment if we do it right which is I think the decision today is mostly about the financials are we gonna put the money in to allow that to happen but perhaps it's possible to articulate a little bit about I guess just confirmation in that thinking is going on and that that will come back to this table or if it's just done automatically at the staff level I'll go to maybe Mr Haran for that answer or if there's a question there even
yes chair I think so so the answer is yes to much of what you said and I'm trying to to figure out there's a puzzle's a lot there and I think I'll try to summarize my thoughts and answering what you what you brought up but there's a couple of issues there is is the asset management program in its specifics around asset classes water sewer roads and so on the planning activities that go in there is not just about setting overall funding targets but the master plans or the capital improvement plans are about specifics so they're about how many kilometers of roads are being done which ones in what order and tie that in to there's smart ways to do all that infrastructure renewal to gain efficiencies and make sure that you don't for example pave a new road and then two years later you know dig it up to replace the pipes underground so that's part of what the asset management program is meant to deliver in the meantime as we're growing that capability where we've already incorporated that thinking into the capital works that we're currently doing for example Heron Street we replaced the water main in the middle of doing the storm main there and when we're done we're gonna pave the road and then Heron will be done for the next twenty-five thirty years that's kind of the concept that we're gonna try to do in the micro scale and then as we expand the amount of work that's happening we'll be doing that kind of thinking in the the more macro as the funding levels increase so that's number one number two is building a capability in-house to be able to handle the core work that our current public works does in terms of operating so maintenance day-to-day and capital work and then as the the demand increases for the amount of capital work to increase our capability to manage you know contracted construction forces that are just focused on one job to do in a certain period of time to be able to oversee that activity which would be new for in some aspects it would be new for Oak Bay so we have to grow into that capability in the next few years
thank you Mr Haran much appreciated all right Mr Payne back to you
your worship if I may comments by councillor Patterson reminded me I have some things actually following the slides that I think would be appropriate to talk about now and that's really the five-year forecast for tax increases and what's driving that so I like to talk about that first and then we'll get into the finance and IT operating budget
okay thank you
let's skip by this so these are the projections for in draft one for the tax increases seven point nine one percent for two thousand twenty five point six five point eight one four point seven two three point six four and you'll notice the 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 first three years of the financial plan tax increase forecast it's really a lot to do with with scaling up that infrastructure and you see it starts to come down in twenty twenty-four so the the median residential impact tax impact to the to median residential property is two hundred thirty-seven dollars hundred eighty-one hundred ninety-nine hundred seventy-one hundred thirty-eight so those are the the increases year of a year I think it was an average of a hundred eighty-five dollars approximately and here's a bit more detailed view of what's driving that you'll see in twenty twenty there's three percent dedicated for infrastructure force growth is two point five nine percent which is which is reasonable new staffing two point three two percent so you can really summarize that the tax increase the recommended tax increase into those three things and then in twenty twenty-one there's a bit of contingency there a fire department apparatus bay leasing that discussion will occur in the part of me in the capital budget some more infrastructure funding new staffing and force growth and I'll just let I think I'll just let council have a have a look at that and if there's any questions I'd be happy to answer you'll notice in twenty twenty-four there's debt servicing costs for Conarven Park envisioned pardon me Conarven Park building and but we also have some debt retiring related to recreational facilities in that year as well and and it's not policy yet but I anticipate that I would recommend policy where when we have debt retiring that is converted into infrastructure funding unless we are at sustainable infrastructure funding level so that's what we've done in in twenty twenty-four we've taken that debt servicing and converted into infrastructure funding so I'll pause there and ask if there's any questions and then we can move on
there are questions councillor Green then councillor Patterson did I say nope okay oh sorry I had to actually councillor Nay first then councillor Green
okay we'll go through you mayor to Mr Payne thank you very much it is really helpful seeing this all broken down like this could you just flip over to the previous slide please so I this is just a very simple question for clarity I haven't added it up exactly so what that would mean is after five years the average taxpayer would be paying about about a thousand dollars more than they are right now that something like that
yes absolutely
okay that's all
thank you councillor Green
thank you through you mayor too Mr Payne would you be able to clarify the term forced growth thank you
thank you for asking and it's something we incorporated into the glossary for that reason because I use it throughout the financial plan and I use it naturally forced growth is essentially the cost the rising cost of things that are outside of control to maintain existing service levels so collective agreement increases inflationary impacts to supplies contractual increases things increases as necessary just to maintain existing service
thank you very much and I I will add to others' comments that this is really helpful and for someone like myself who you know finds budgets daunting and challenging sometimes I really find the breakdowns really helpful so thank you so much
thank you councillor Green any other questions at this time oh thank you maybe actually I have one question for you that sorry I just in the infrastructure funding I just it struck me as odd that twenty twenty was three percent twenty twenty-one was one point one three percent and they're back to three percent in twenty twenty-two if we're trying to ramp that up why the dip I guess would be the the question in the second year
yes thank you thank you your worship simple answer is just to sort of moderate the increases a little bit so absolutely we'd be within our you could you could scale that up in twenty twenty-one if you wish as well okay thank you for your patience there so I'd like to invite Mike Gustafson and Jason Bristol up to the rotating chairs as as I'm calling it they're principals from the sea to sky who is our IT contractors I'm gonna run through the finance and IT budget and these gentlemen are here to answer anything IT operating related and also we'll be discussing office three sixty-five which is a proposed increase this year
thank you Mr Payne could you just tell us which page you're on the financial plan this is situated at so we can actually read it in more detail on our
right yes of course so this is page thirty-five of the financial plan
thank you very much page thirty-five again for those around the stairs or in the audience or at home page okay thank you welcome Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much, uh, your worship. So when we look at the finance operating budget, we've broken it down into essentially three main services. I'll call them finance, general, parking enforcement, and information technology. The 2020 financial plan forecasts an overall increase to this budget of 4.4% due to forced growth. So the idea here for counsel and the and the public that are listening, these charts here that say operating budget, they're really status quo budget. The only impact on this should be forced growth. Anything above forced growth is identified separately in the new operating budget requests heading there. So this is really, um, if we were to not change whatsoever, 4.4% would be required to maintain existing operations. So I'll go through some of the variances there. A parking, parking enforcement variances, expected increase is 12.6%. And that's just simply contracting costs we have, uh, with the commissioners. And and much like we've actually seen this in many of our contracts, the labor costs, um, are escalating at a high pace so that they can attract and retain, um, employees. And that translates into highs, higher contracting costs for us. Uh, the information technology is forecasted to to increase by 5.4%. A large portion of this is a $9,000 increase we have, uh, to, um, uh, maintain our telus managed fiber, fiber optic cables. So we went from an unmanaged service to a managed service. And essentially, uh, the fiber optic cables connect our 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 buildings. And going to a managed service by by telus significantly increases the uptime. So the connection shouldn't be disrupted nearly at all. And when it is, the the customer service to to restore that is significantly higher. I believe the, uh, it's within two hours or something like that, that they that they they promised to get there and start working on it. It's also increased bandwidth and security. So we've increased, uh, we've increased that. Now, without that line item, we would be asking for a 3.1% increase to the information technology, which would be pretty consistent, um, with forced growth. So we're expecting, uh, the impact to the median residential property as a result of this 4.4% increase to the operating budget to be $6.92. And overall, that's a 0.023% increase to taxes in general. Okay, so I'm going to pause there, ask if counsel has any questions about the operating budget before we discuss Office 365 below.
Any questions of counsel? I'll just ask you just a general IT type question on the, um, I I know a lot of enterprises are going through, go through regular sort of licensing reviews and, uh, and do or do do that more across the board and managing the licenses. Uh, I'm just curious, has has Oak Bay gone through that process? And and is maybe this relates more to the upgrade to Office 365, because that would tie into that, I would imagine. But, um, is that something that, um, we've looked at? And if not, is that something on the table?
To your worship, I I will, uh, ask for our, um, contractors to to add comment. But what I will say is that the majority of our our licenses that are incorporated into our our budget are for some of our ERP systems such as Tempest and Vatom is our accounting system, our GIS. And, um, I I hope they're not listening, we're quite dependent on those systems. Um, and the and and there's not a lot of negotiation room with those. So those are looked at annually, but there's very little change. The other licensing, of course, is your Microsoft, and we've had a look at that, uh, this year. But I'll ask, uh, I'll ask you to sky if they have anything to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Uh, your worship, yes, that's an ongoing part of the process that we deal with on on a regular basis. So the Office 365 piece that we're going to talk about is a big part of the licensing cost that the district does, uh, have have the burden of of bearing. And that's something we're looking at really making more efficient and getting better use out of the dollars that are spent on on that portion of licensing. And all the productivity pieces that we are responsible for, we're reviewing on a regular basis as well.
Well, let's deal with it then at that, and we'll talk about the Office 365. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, okay, then let's get to the second piece.
Yes, uh, thank you, your worship. So I'll, uh, I'll introduce this new operating budget item, uh, on a high level. And again, I'll invite, uh, Mike, excuse me, Mr. Gustafson to add any comments about it. But the the financial plan proposes that we we upgrade our current volume licenses, which is Office 2013, uh, to Office 365. The most recent version of Office would be 2019. And there's a couple, a couple of different reasons for that. Mainstream support for Office 2013 has has ended. So that means there's no, um, additional enhancements to that product. And Office 365 is perpetual. So you would continually get the productivity enhancements that that occur with that. Uh, security patching for Office 2013 ends in in 2023. So we, it would be irresponsible of us to to continue using those license past 2023. And, uh, as I mentioned, Office 365 is a subscription basis now. So you don't just purchase a license and use it as long as you want, which is what 2013 is. You purchase an annual subscription to that. And the annual subscription costs are estimated to be about $60,000. And it's cloud based, so it's subscription and cloud based. There's automatic security patch, uh, patching and enhancement patching. And because it's it's cloud based, that's, uh, that's, uh, much, much, much more easy to maintain. Correct me if I'm wrong, but much more easy to to maintain. There's multi-factor authentication available, which is a security enhancement, which basically means if you log into your i- your office account from a different location that you normally would, uh, you'd be required to authenticate that login with your cell phone or another method just to confirm that it's not, uh, someone else who's hacked into your accounts. There's enhanced spam filter, and really there's additional components. So it it's difficult to compare the current product to this product because it's it's a, it's a new product with new features. And some of the new features include Teams, which is a collaborative, uh, component to Office 365, instant messenger, video calling, uh, calling, uh, OneDrive, which is a document storage, uh, component, and SharePoint. Oh, do you want me to scroll down? Yeah, let's go, here we go, here we go. And and so I I did a little bit of analysis. So they ask is for an additional $60,000, but annually. Uh, so that that would need to be added to the tax base for it. However, I did a little bit of analysis on the purchasing of the volume licenses. If one would presume that we would purchase a bulk, you know, 125 volume licenses for all of our PCs, and then presume that that product is really good for three years. The annual cost to support that is still $35,000. So really, the incremental difference, according to my analysis, is an additional $25,000. What we would have to do, uh, the other way around is is essentially put aside $35,000 into reserve every year, draw it out to purchase the volume licenses. Instead, we'd be, we would just be paying $60,000 a year. So it's not as, um, as large as as the $61,000, um, seems. So we do, we do have transfer to reserves for capital works, for general capital that we would typically use to buy the volume licenses. Instead, we would just, um, let the reserves, uh, continue to accumulate for other capital purposes. So it sort of helps our sustainable infrastructure replacement goals, that that difference there. So now I'll ask, uh, Mr. Gustafson, if he has any additional comment.
Welcome, Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Mr. Payne. I, comments are very valid, and I would echo everything that that was just said. There's a a big amount of value in this project, not just in a direct replacement for the existing software licenses that are in place. I mean, that that is, that is part of this, you know, the licenses are due for replacement. They do need, they do need to be upgraded to something newer. But there's a lot of potential future value in going this route that you're not going to have in the alternative, um, more legacy or traditional perpetual licensing model. So, um, much like talking about the additional value in the in the water main replacements and how you see future value down the road, this is, this is very similar in that if we can look at putting this product in place in 2020, for example, in 2021, we can look at doing something like a Microsoft Teams deployment, as Mr. Payne had mentioned, which is a collaboration and communication platform. If we want to do that without having the Office 65 solution in place, that's going to be extremely complex, extremely cumbersome, extremely expensive to do. If we have this platform in place, uh, you know, on an ongoing basis, that is effectively a net zero cost. It's it's an included portion of the licenses that are already going to be purchased. And we can roll that out with minimal to to no cost at all, uh, to have that product in place. And that applies not just to something like the Teams product that, uh, Mr. Payne had mentioned, but also OneDrive, which is a cloud storage platform, and SharePoint, which is also file storage as well. So we can move forward on new initiatives that are going to allow real increases in growth and efficiency in communication among staff and the ability to work with external parties, including, um, residents, to, um, take advantage of some of these products. And those are things that we're just not going to see in, um, the more legacy solutions. Uh, the other important point that I wanted to mention is that, um, Mr. Payne had talked about the cost of purchasing, uh, perpetual licenses and then having to renew them every three years, which is certainly true. The other part is that the industry as a whole, and Microsoft is a prime example of this, are really pushing to move all of their customers to subscription licensing. They really don't want anybody on the legacy model anymore, because of course they want the the regular recurring revenue on a monthly basis or an annual basis. What they're doing to encourage that is they're increasing the prices of the traditional product model. So any calculation we look at now, talking about, you know, what a three-year or six-year forecast might be for replacements, honestly, is very likely to be incorrect in three years. You know, we're looking at, uh, many vendors that are 20 and 30 and 40% increases over the past couple of years. And Microsoft has indicated they're going to be doing increases as well in the in the near future. We don't know what those numbers are, but it could very well be in the same sort of ballpark. So I think that it would be prudent to consider that, whereas the new subscription models are seeing significant decreases and additional features added on a regular basis.
Thank you. Are there questions of CD Sky at this time? Counselor, yes, Counselor Zelka.
Oh, thank you very much, Chair, and thank you so much for the presentation. And the, uh, I'm very pleased to see that our IT is being, um, taken up to the next level to support staff, uh, moving forward, uh, with these wonderful initiatives overall. Uh, with respect to the Office 365, I presume, um, uh, I presume it's associated with the Teams, uh, capability. Um, I see there's a web capability, but also a voice. Um, is there any plans or any consideration about taking out the old phone system and replacing it completely with, for example, Skype for Business? I just was wondering whether, uh, we're setting up for that, or is that part of this initiative?
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, uh, your worship. Excellent question. I can, I can say that we haven't discussed that as a leadership whatsoever, but I I had that very conversation with these gentlemen, uh, not a couple hours ago, uh, because some of the functionality that the, uh, that the the new components of Office 360 provides can render other functionality in the office redundant. Uh, so there's, there's certainly opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Appleton?
Uh, thank you, worship, and through you to staff. With respect to Office 365, um, to be, to be blunt, because of the nature of business and because of the nature of the of who's offering it, we do not have any other viable alternative to this software package that I'm aware of. I'm I'm no IT expert, but I'm going to assume that given what we currently do for business, there is no alternative to this. And then just the second part of my question is, um, there was brief mention made of, uh, the subscription model decreasing in cost potentially relative to the 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 ongoing licensing. Um, I'm going to assume that there's nothing built into these subscription licenses that restrict or otherwise constrain the vendor, uh, to increasing this subscription cost to whatever they so choose in subsequent years.
Mr. Payne? Any viable alternatives, anything, any legal constraints to pricing?
Thank you, I was struggling to remember the first, the first part of the question. And I can't think of any, uh, any alternatives, um, to the word processing, to the, uh, to the Excel, the Access, the, uh, Outlook email. I suppose there are some alternatives, but at great cost of productivity and uniformity with other folks in the industry.
Counselor Appleton, yes, you're correct. There's, there's no agreement that in the long term, any subscription vendor, um, generally won't commit to locking into prices. So we we usually can't guarantee that anything's not going to increase. Um, what we can tell you is with our experience in the market, we haven't seen that, uh, in the past couple of years. We've seen generally steady, um, sometimes small increases or small decreases in prices. Uh, but the big change we've seen, especially for Microsoft, is extensive increases in, uh, features and productivity that are included at the same price point. And their roadmap for the next few years shows that continuing. So, uh, it is certainly possible that we will see those costs increase. Um, I would expect on a small basis, uh, year over year. But I would be, uh, very confident in saying that three years from now, we'll be utilizing features in these packages that right now would be incredibly cost prohibitive to deploy. And that if we went in a different direction, for example, buying perpetual licenses or getting piecemeal different versions of this package and these services from different vendors, we would not be able to deploy those additional services and those additional features. So we're going to see a lot more value by keeping everything in one house, basically, with Microsoft and taking advantage of having, uh, the best of breed solutions they have available to offer.
Anyone else before we get back to Counselor Zelka? Counselor Zelka?
Uh, thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak a second time. Uh, two, um, quick questions. Uh, is it the Office 365 business premium or the E3, uh, subscription that you're suggesting? The reason I ask that is that, uh, that'll tell me exactly, uh, what what this includes.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The, um, the license that we're looking at is the E3 license. And the reason, the reason behind that is E3 has some features in it that we need as an organization to be able to support our current infrastructure here. We have a very, um, complex environment with multiple servers, terminal servers at the rec center, for example, and for the office staff here in the office. The, the way that that interacts with the the users logging in the desktops, we need to use the E3 license.
Excellent. Last question is, um, uh, thank you for that. Uh, I think that makes perfect sense, uh, and most larger organizations tend to go with that one. The last question is, have you considered, uh, for example, G Suite? Or any of the other, um, competitors to the same offering? Uh, that happens to be the Google one. I know there's some open source ones, uh, but but G Suite is the other, uh, popular commercial one. Thank you.
Yeah, very good question as well. Um, Google is a very good, um, platform. The applications that we use primarily on the finance side will not allow us to use an application like G Suite. For example, um, Vatom and Tempest are both heavily utilized for net, for financial reporting. Uh, they all have add-ins for Office, for Excel, for Word. And they won't interact with, um, G Suite the same way that Office will. So that would be a huge undertaking from the technology side and for staff retraining to switch to something like G Suite, which for some of you who may not know how it works, it's more web-based. You're working inside a web browser to edit documents rather than having an application on your desktop. So, uh, again, for a small business, it might be a great offering. But for an organization, organization that's heavily invested in Microsoft already, what, using applications that work off Microsoft and its platform, I wouldn't suggest it.
Thank you. Any other questions? I was saying, uh, my question relates to the, um, uh, the implications of this is also, of course, going to more of a cloud-based server side. So are there any cost savings from both server acquisition costs or maintenance costs, server replacement costs over time as well? Uh, recognizing the incremental cost increases, maybe $25,000 or $35,000, uh, are there offsets for that on the on the backend system side?
Uh, another great question. There aren't a lot of offsets when we look at decommissioning hardware that we have currently in the organization. We have a very complex server, um, setup right now, and we're actually decreasing servers at this very moment. So we've gone to a multi-server setup and we've decommissioned hardware. We're consolidating things at the moment. So we've actually done a lot of that over the last year. To run things like, um, Office 365 in the cloud doesn't require us to have any hardware on site. But it also doesn't mean that we can remove hardware, because we still need the hardware that we have to run things like Tempest and Vatom and, you know, and all the file storage that we have here in the office. The the one, the one piece that we'll see a decrease in is the amount of storage here in the office. If we implement things like OneDrive for cloud storage or SharePoint for records management down the road. down the road, then we'll see less files being stored locally on the server here in the office and more files being stored in the cloud. And I don't see us reducing the amount of servers that we'll need in the office soon. And that's primarily because some of the software packages we're using, like Tempest and Vadem, use the majority of the resources now. And the file storage and the email are actually a small portion of that. They take a lot of work to maintain, but on the hardware resource side, they take very little compared to everything else.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so I think we're done on this session then. Is there anything else, Mr. Payne, to cover off before we move on?
Nope, thank you. We'll move on to the special initiatives and then back into the operating budgets after that.
And thank you to CD Sky for coming out here and answering questions on behalf. Thank you. Actually, maybe before I let you go, if there's, I will invite anybody from the public who wishes to come forward to ask questions related to CD, to the Office 365, we can maybe do that piece. And if not, then we'll move on, and we'll get to the broader questions at a later time. Who wishes to speak to the Office 365? Any questions? I'm seeing any. Okay, so well, thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Payne, back to you, and then we'll go through the next session, then we'll open it up to general questions, I guess, and to the public.
Thank you, Worship. And we're going to talk about the special initiatives. I'm just going to pull up the page numbers so folks can have a look. Excuse me. So in the financial plan, it's page 12. It's a good summary of all special initiatives. We do have the entire leadership team here to answer any questions. We've got the rotating table here for anybody. I'm going to go through some of the special initiatives that I thought we could just talk about briefly, because we've had good discussion about this over the last couple council meetings. And so, but it's still an opportunity for council to ask some further questions.
Okay, thank you. And it's probably helpful as well just to highlight if things are already funded from previous year carryovers versus new funding in this year as well, if we can maybe do that as we go.
Correct. And actually, I hadn't planned on discussing any of the carryover items, so it won't come up.
Make it simpler, thank you.
Yeah, and they are, they are, most of them at least are identified as carryover in the schedule. So the snapshot for special initiatives, council initiatives, the council priorities from 2020 to 2024 are $2.2 million. $1.2 million of that is concentrated in year 2020, and that may create an expectation that all of those projects will get done in 2020. That may be an unrealistic expectation. I like to say that off the top. We found it all in 2020 so that we can get it done if the stars aligned, but a lot of it results in carryovers. Mind you, again, with the fresh philosophy, budget philosophy in terms of continuing operations, January 1st through council deliberations, as we go on through this five-year plan, we should be able to get through this work plan faster as well. So some of the things I wanted to highlight, again, it's funded from accumulated surplus, so the funding is finite, and council needs to look at it and say, do we want to, do we want to use reserves to the tune of $2.2 million to fund this sort of thing? So removal of any of these projects or changing of any of these projects won't change the tax impact, but it will change how much money we have in the bank essentially. The average over the five years is $450,000 approximately, if you average the $2.2 million over the five years. In my experience, that's manageable. If, however, next year and the year after that, staff really utilize and spend the entire operating budget every single year, which is really the plan, that's what council wants to see from its staff, and there's no surplus, then the accumulated surplus will decline. But in my experience, half a million dollar surplus, it happens. Not that we're aiming to do that, but it happens, and we're not allowed, in fact, to budget to do that. So staff are generally comfortable with this. So some of the special initiatives listed on here that I think I would like to talk about are under sustainable services, and a lot of these are asset management plans. And you'll notice the concentration of those asset management plans, because they really need to all work together. The Director of Engineering previously provided an example of how perhaps we don't want to dig up a pipe when the paving is due for replacement in the next two years. So if we prepare a number of asset management plans and then tie them together, we can really optimize capital investment. So some of the things proposed is sanitary sewer master plan, total of $250,000, 120 20 and 150 in 2021. On the heels of that, the storm sewer master plan, similar price range, 150 in 2022 and 150 in 2023. We've got this one-time project here, which should be...
Can I just, I'm just going to interrupt this, and if people have questions, just stick up your hand as we go through these. But on those two together, is there no efficiencies of doing them simultaneously? I always think if we're setting up to go through one, doing both pipes sort of from the same location at the same time, of scoping and sorting that out might have some advantage, or the scale of the contracts might have some advantage? Is that, I turned to Mr. Haran on that one, in terms of the timing of those, is it just a staff capacity limitation?
That's an excellent question, Your Worship. They might be able to be lumped in together, and we can certainly look at that. Historically, like leading up to this year, we consider them completely separate for the simple reason that these master plans couldn't be completed until the closed-circuit television and condition assessment programs were completed. And so that started five years ago, excuse me, and the sanitary sewer was a five-year plan, and the storm sewer was a 10-year plan. But we've been able to accelerate that and are likely to finish both sides this year. So that means whether we have the capacity in-house, in other words, for me to manage those two contracts together, it's a good question, I'll have to look at it. But it reflects the prioritization of what should, if only one can happen at a time, which one should happen first? And we consider that to be the sanitary sewer.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you very much for that explanation. And I think your explanation of why we take care in terms of how we're doing the projects was an important one, and obviously, the more we have this finalized plans in place, the better we can do that. So I appreciate the approach taken by staff on this. Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. And the next project that I'd like to discuss, there's the sanitary and storm sewer CCTV carryover. This is a little bit unusual for council, because this is actually operating funding. So there's CCTV funding already established within the operating budget, but there were some leftover from last year. And typically, it's not good practice to carry over operating funding. Otherwise, every little department, you know, wants the 10K that they didn't spend on the chairs and all that sort of thing. However, the continuity of this CCTV is important, and we've discussed that with the Director of Engineering, and he's making really good progress on that. He wants to see it to completion, so we've included that in there. And since the underspending occurred in the 2019 budget, it's funding that will be available from the surplus in the 2019 budget to fund this here. The next project there is pavement condition assessment, and this is a project that you probably haven't seen on your radar before. We do have a pavement condition assessment, I believe, from 2013 on the books, which needs updating. But we just happen to know that there's a good grant coming online this year from the federal government, from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And in my previous experience, we've been very successful achieving that grant. It's not for the total value, though, it's for $55,000. So this project will be grant contingent if council supports it, and it's just a good opportunity to get that grant. I remember from the previous years, really, the first people out to gate in that grant application were given the funding, and there's a lot of people left without it, is highly subscribed, so we wanted to take advantage of that. So that's why that's there. And then you'll notice a facilities master plan as well, so $50,000 2021 and $50,000 in 2022.
Counselor, break through. You had a question?
Just, did I miss you saying something about the emergency communications plan? Or did you talk about that? I'm not sure.
I did talk about, I'm being selective, but if you have questions, by all means. Okay, thank you. So moving down to the service excellence.
Sorry, Counselor Patterson, you did have a question?
Yes, just if we could elaborate a little bit on the facilities master plan, what it will be, what all it incorporates.
Mr. Haran?
Through you, Chair, the intention around a facilities master plan is similar to what some of the other municipalities in the region have done in terms of, it's very similar to what we talk about for the asset management plans for the other asset classes. So in other words, trying to capture the scope and of the, so listing, complete listing of the assets, building on the Moore and Associates reports that was done in 2016, fleshing it out and providing an ability for the council to make some decisions about repair or replacement or refurbishment of the 29 municipal buildings that are in the asset register for the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. The next project that I'd like to discuss is the service, under-service excellence, the human resource implementation plan. And council recently received a presentation about that. The projected cost in 2020 is $74,000, and that's mostly composed of some occupational health and safety consulting, employee engagement, performance feedback evaluation, and some policy development. Significant project. You'll notice down below that, we've got an emergency evacuation plan, and there's two there, so that's not a, that's a deliberate duplication. There's another grant that will become available. We were successful in the grant in 2019 from the UBCM. It's likely that we can be successful again in 2020 and refine the scope of that plan. So it would be, again, contingent on grant approval. The project directly below that is the fire master plan, which is proposed for the total of $50,000. I believe we discussed this project at the council priorities meeting, but it would provide a holistic planning for the fire service in the district, and that's about as much detail as I can get in. But if you'd like, the fire chief is here to answer your questions. And then the network security audit, I don't really need to repeat myself here, but I'm a bit of a geek, and I like to, I was at an IT security conference just the other day, and, for example, the new malware, it's not ransomware, it's not taking control of your data and locking it down and selling it back to you, it's actually taking your data, posting it on the dark web, and then agreeing not to let everyone see it if you pay the ransom. So we've got systems set up whereby we have backups, so if someone locks down our data, we can recover from backups. But that's useless if they've taken our data and want to ransom it for privacy impacts. And you'll recall the Life Labs incident recently, that wasn't a ransomware attack, that was them paying the ransom so that they wouldn't expose people's personal data all over the web. So the sophistication continues to evolve with the criminals, and so we really wanted to get a network security audit done soon. So that concludes the special initiatives that I had picked out to discuss, but by all means, the entire leadership here, team is here to discuss any questions you might have.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, in the human resources plan implementation, the occupational health and safety portion of it, there was a requirement in the first year, but then nothing in the operating for the following years. And I'm just wondering why, because I know that occupational health and safety has recurring updates required and that type of thing, so I'm just wondering if that will come into a different budget or where this goes.
Turn to Ms. Donnelly. Welcome, Ms. Donnelly, who's our Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, thank you, through your worship. We have a request for $30,000 in 2020, and that is to actually do a review of our current program and to identify the gaps and to actually revamp the program to get it to a place where we know we're compliant with WorkSafe. And so that budget is meant to be spent in 2020. And then any other upgrades or things that would need to sort of complement that would be after 2020, and any requests would have to come forward to council for that. So I'm hoping that we can actually build the program for that amount and within 2020.
So there could be then likely amendments coming forward in future budgets for follow-up programs for that?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing that, can I just get a reminder, if the fire chief could come forward, just what the fire master plan incorporates? It's a significant number, and I just want to have a sense of where that sits in the overall scheme of things.
Absolutely, Your Worship. So this would be an external consultant's analysis of the District of Oak Bay, the calls, inventory of our buildings, where our calls occur, existing apparatus, staffing, fire prevention, fire investigation, all things fire, really a real holistic approach from the outside that would help inform council and the fire chief as to the best direction over a long period of time. And I would call it a fire service review would be an accurate description. Sanich has had one, there's been a number of different departments within BC, and it would also analyze and look at where our mutual aid assets are, where their responses are, and how our fire department fits into the larger regional structure as well. So, for instance, when we're looking at, whether it be mutual aid agreement renewals or we're looking at deployment changes, it would assist in with those metrics in helping us make those decisions and inform council.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Green?
Thank you, Chief. Just through you, Mayor, to the chief, just one last question. On the fire master plan that you just described, would this also address issues of climate change like drought, potential fire hazard? We don't have wildfire hazard areas other than, I think, Uplands Park in Oak Bay, but would those issues be captured in a fire master plan as well in terms of deployment and fire safety for residents, et cetera? Thank you.
I can't speak specifically at this point to climate change and the impacts, but it certainly would be looking at the entire district and the district-specific hazards. And with your, through the chair, with your comments, we certainly would be looking at ensuring that the consultant would review some of those areas to see where we'd be in 10, 20, 30 years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief Hughes? All right, back to you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Worship. So that will conclude our discussion for special initiatives. We'll continue on into the operating budgets, we'll go to corporate administration, and then into fire, and then into police, and that will conclude it for the night. So class dismissed for the remainder of the leadership team. Let me just set it up.
Sounds good, thank you very much. I will, just as you offered at the beginning, that we can invite members of the public who wish to come forward and talk about anything so far, you're welcome to do so. And if we want to wait till the end, we'll have more opportunity at the end after all the presentations are completed. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to come forward at this time? Come on up, you're welcome to come forward. I would just ask the usual, that you just state your name and municipality for the record and just write it as well, so we have the correct spelling. I can just ask you to keep your comments or the points on the presentation so far, unless you have to leave, in which case we'll take any comments you have.
It is I again.
Could you just state your name for the record? Could you just state the name for the...
Graham Ross, sorry.
Thank you.
Eighteen months ago, there was an election in this municipality, you may remember, and after that election, those of us who are interested in this stuff felt that there should be a number of change, and there would be a number of changes, and nothing seemed to happen for quite a while. But tonight, I'm delighted to see that the financial side of this organization is being seriously addressed and that they appear to be moving from financial accounting, which is the auditors satisfying the government, to management accounting, which allows you folks to work with the which allows you folks to work with the staff, to control costs, see when they get off track, stock, see trends and see what is happening. And I think that's a great move and I'm very pleased to see what's happening in, in that particular area of finance. Now my full disclosure, that's my background. I was chair of the, finance chair of the Victoria Airport. But one other point, the, the survey, I'm benignly skeptical about surveys, but I did, I took it and I just have two questions of, I guess it's Ms. Ba.
Just put it through me and I'll direct it.
Oh yeah, sorry. And that is, what controls do you have to assure that the, the people who are filling it out are Oak Bay residents? And the second one is what, what system do you have to make sure that somebody only fills it out once? Those are my, I'm, I'm happy to see the results and look forward to seeing the fulsome results. But in the meantime, I just like to, to visit the integrity of the system.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And Ms. Bay, do you have answers to those two questions?
Thank you, through the chair. In terms of the, the question of what kind of controls do we have in, in place on the, the number of times people can respond, to be honest, I'm not entirely sure of the technical end of that. So I'd have to look into that and, and report back. I do know that the survey that we're using is, or the, we're actually calling it a questionnaire because we're, we're wanting to make it quite clear that it doesn't have the rigor associated with the survey in terms of being randomly sampled. So we're certainly not portraying it as a survey. We're portraying it as a questionnaire for that reason. We have included a question in terms of where people are living. I am pleased to say that the overwhelming majority of the respondents, I think maybe there are six out of the 250 or so at this point who were not Oak Bay residents. We do ask the question. They're nicely distributed in terms of responses between North Oak Bay and, and South Oak Bay, roughly 50/50.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And Ms. Bay perhaps will just ask when that does get presented, whatever information is available to be included as part of the preamble would be helpful, just so we have the context. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, your worship. So we'll pick up the operating budget and right now we're looking at page 32. It's up on the screen. It will be the corporate administration operating budget. First, a few corrections. We're going to find a, a number of corrections through, throughout the financial plan. They're just version corrections. And again, I apologize for them. One in particular on, on this page is the archived variance, which is actually 24.9%, not 2.49%. I'll begin just by talking a little bit about the accomplishments. And again, I want to focus the operating budget on what service it delivers, whether it be internal or external to, to the public. And so I'll talk a bit about the accomplishments and some of the plans in, in the next year. And then I'll, I'll talk specifically about some of these, these variances. And again, open for comments or questions throughout the process. So in 2019, corporate administration department accomplished quite a bit. I'll highlight a couple. They revised the annual report, completely new format, significantly expanded social media presence and, and digital communications, prepared corporate plan and corporate plan progress report, which will be integrated quite closely with the financial plan and, and the financial reporting component. Administration started tracking responsibility, started tracking, started a tracking repository for council resolutions, updated a number of bylaws and procedures and reviewed councils committees and commissions. First draft of the new procedure bylaw was presented to council not too, not too distant, just a little while ago. And they initiated, they initiated the development of a human resource plan and undertook a dear count administered immunociceptives. So those are just some of the things that was accomplished for that budget in 2019. And that's not to talk about all the, the regular duties that, that occur throughout the year that, that department is funded by that budget. In 2020, some of the plans would, are to advance an negotiation of the marine lease, advance the HR plan components and implement some of the HR plan recommendations. Looking forward to a refreshed website and a review and revamp of the occupational health and safety programs. Just a snippet again of some of the things that, that are planned for that department. So to talk specifically about some, some of the variances there. The municipal, regional, district tax is something, is a tax that municipalities can opt in for and is to fund a tourism committee. So you're, you're well aware from the presentation this morning that whatever funds we receive there funds Oak Bay tourism. And the variances there, frankly, they don't really matter because as, as the, the mayor correctly pointed out, any additional revenue gets put into reserve to fund future operations. So even if staff are actually currently working on refining these projections, the financial plan, but they don't, they don't impact the, the tax, the tax impact whatsoever. We saw this year a significant increase in the, in that tax, not only because of the base, the, the tax collected from the hotels, but it was the first year that Airbnb's. And we're currently ascertaining what the numbers of collection there is. So it's very interesting. The next line item in the operating expense there is, is council. The council, so the financial plan forecasts a 2.8% increase to the expenses related to council. And it does anticipate an increase to remuneration, although that will have to be accomplished via bylaw. So it is on staff's radar to prepare remuneration bylaw for council consideration at some point this year. We don't presume, we don't presume that council will support or not support that, but, but the financial plan does anticipate an increase in, in the forecast there. The second line item there, corporate administration, and we're showing an increase to this line of 6.9%. It's approximately $78,000. And the main components of that are, are really $25,000 related to salary steps and another $25,000 related to staffing reorganization. Without those two factors, this would be a 2.5% increase. So it just puts in context what makes up the, the component of that increase there. The human resource line item is mostly composed of staffing and some corporate training funds as well as our GV LRA levy, which is anticipated to increase by approximately 12%. And that, that's a reason for the majority of the 5.3% tax increase. It's about $5,000. Again, without, without a significant increase to that, this would, would have been about 3%. The communication budget, again, you know, it's small numbers, but the, the percentage variances seem, seem higher. It's, we really, we've established a $2,000 overtime budget in that, in that cost center. Our risk management line item down below anticipated an increase of 1.8%. That's composed of our legal expenses as well as general liability insurance. And I just, and although the variance isn't significant, and here I just wanted to pause and talk about insurance in general. And we're seeing some local governments that have been hit with very large increase to their, to their insurance premiums, mostly building. Now our building insurance premiums happen to be actually spread throughout our operating budget elsewhere. But we're taking some proactive steps to ensure that if we have an increase coming, we'll have ample time to discuss it and discuss options. Our, our building, our, our, our building property insurance will expire in fall. So it is priced into our operating budget and, and it's moderate, a moderate increase for 2020. But come fall, we might see a, a large increase. We don't, we don't know yet, but we're in constant communication with our, with our providers. Our general liability insurance is, is provided through MIA B C. And then we've got private sector insurance for, for a property. The next line item there is the municipal hall 6.9% increase. And you can see the, the reason for this increase is really driven by actual expenditures in, in the last couple of years. So we, we always look back at the trends over the last couple of years. And you'll notice the municipal hall forecast is about $78,000. So we're seeing a ramp up of the general repairs around municipal hall. And, and that accounts for the majority of the increase in there. The next line item there, grants and fee for service. You recall that the, the grant and aid deadline was January 31st, which is, has passed. Staff do intend on coming to council to affirm the grant and aid levels that they wish to provide for in, in this year. That might, might drive a change here. We, we don't know. But we've added just a 2% recognition of forced growth from the organizations that we provide grants to. The grant and aid program includes the grant that we pay to the business improvement area. And we collect, we collect a tax for that. So that's offset. It's about $78,000. They're still preparing their budget, but it's due very soon. So we'll see a final number there. But again, it's, it's offset by the taxation. So that's an in and an out. And then there's also the South Island, excuse me, South Island Prosperity Fund that gets paid out of that grant and aid budget and a number of other grant and aids that council has identified as perpetual. And so it really leaves about $115,000 for grant and aid applications that you actually see at the council table and then get to approve through the year. So the event budget, you're seeing a slight increase, 1.8% there, although the year-to-dates were, were significantly above that. And that actually doesn't represent overall an increased expense to the district. It really is an allocation of, of the in-kind services provided by Public Works. So generally, they'll come, they'll do the decorations, they'll provide support for the Oak Bay Tea Party, et cetera. And you know, coding of that has historically been to the Public Works Department. And really it belongs here. We want to, we want to show that the true cost of the service. So any increase over here is offset by decreases elsewhere in the, in the Public Works Department. And that will conclude my presentation for the corporate administration budget. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Are there any questions of committee? I just have one. I guess I'm the only person at this. Just, it's actually not a question. It's just a comment. The, you rightly point out that there are a number of grant and aid pieces that are essentially perpetual or certainly have longer cycles. The South Island Prosperity Project you, you, you mentioned has sort of a five-year commitment to that piece and it's coming up. And I'm just wondering if there, if there's any way we can build into our internal processes sort of a, a periodic review for things like that, where there's a five-year review. We, we look at it maybe a year or two before it expires so we can make another commitment to that. Because some of those, I think in fairness, they're perpetual, but we should probably have a fair review process. And the only fair way of doing that would frankly be to do it a year or two in advance to give notice if they've been expecting it over a year. So I don't know if that's something that we can sort of consider building into our granting process over time. Not necessarily expecting it this year, but just so we can kind of flag those pieces as they go forward. I think it'd be worthwhile to do, but I don't know how council feels. Looking, general nods around the table. Mr. Payne, is that possible?
Yes, your worship. I would agree. And there, I distinguish between grant and aid recipients who are really taking those funds and providing totally different service to, to our citizens or other citizens of the Greater Victoria. And they're distinct on their own. And then there's organizations that are grant recipient who really provides a service on behalf of the district, the actual organization. So Oak Bay Tourism, BIA, folks that are actually doing something on our behalf. And that's almost like a contractual relationship. So I, I've seen in, in my experience where you create a, really a fee-for-service contractual relationship. You sign a three-year contract, you review that contract and, and ensure that those services are actually delivered. And then the grant and aid folks, they're sort of separated that way. So I would envision doing something like that, of course, with council's endorsement of that process in the future.
Lots of work for you ahead of time. We don't need to prioritize that one. I just thought I might as well flag it as long as we're in this, in this, in this meeting. Any other questions or comments at this point? Seeing you, let's keep going. Mr. Payne.
Thank you, your worship. So again, this chart represents what we consider to be forced growth. To, so the, the cost of continuing the same service. And then down below, new operating budget items are, they're not necessarily non-forced growth, growth items, but certainly significant items that should be discussed separately. So in this case, I just want to point out another quick error here. We have this one line item here that says plus 1.00 confidential administrative support clerk for $48,000. Please strike that. Version two, it's not there whatsoever. And it, and it shouldn't be included in the totals. So really what we have is the consulting budget, the directors strategic initiatives, corporate services, the tuition, communications. Now, to comment on, on the budget practice here in the past, which, which is common throughout the region, what, when new positions are funded, sometimes they're funded only partially in the year to represent when that position will, will get hired. And that's really what has happened with the director of strategic initiatives and also the communication specialist. So the, the previous CFO recognized the communication specialist wouldn't start until halfway through the year. And so that position was only funded halfway. That's really not the practice that, that I will undertake moving forward. I fund the full position in the full year despite the fact it might not be filled. Because otherwise it sort of ties council hands in the next year when it comes to tax increases and using that tax increase for, for their strategic purposes. So before we even started planning for 2020, you sort of obligated yourself to 75, an increase of $75,000 to fund the rest of that position and $50,000 for the communications. So that's really driving a lot of the major, major increase in this department, notwithstanding any decision that, that you want to make to the contrary. I'll point out three items here which are, they're closely related and they, they should be outlined better that way. The repurposing of the consulting budget, the director, the deputy director of corporate services and the tuition reimbursement program. So, so staff have identified the deputy director of corporate service position and the tuition reimbursement program as high priority areas. And we looked within the department and repurposed existing funding to fund that. So the consulting budget offset completely funds the, the deputy director of corporate services position and tuition reimbursement. So those three items in net have no impact on, on the taxes. But we wanted to show it in here for transparency. So I'm going to invite Mrs., Ms. Varela to, to add additional comment if she wishes.
Ms. Varela.
Thank you, your worship. So as we've discussed, this director team is working diligently to update what I characterize as the district's administrative infrastructure. So I've seen a lot of new bylaws. The procedure bylaw, I think, was last updated in 1999. That was a big piece of work. You just saw some financial bylaws repealed from the 1950s and 1960s. You currently have a commission and committee review underway for longstanding bodies. Lots of, lots of updating and modernization that's going on. With the reduction of the consulting budget, we simply don't have the capacity right now to make use of that consulting budget. That requires a level of liaison and coordination that we don't have at the staffing level, which is why we're asking to reallocate that budget to actually bring on a staff person that can assist us with modernizing this organization over the next easily decade. In conjunction with, working with what we have, we're also restructuring two support positions behind the scenes. So the idea is the administration department would function as a cohesive team with complementing skills and responsibilities so that we have consistency in service provision in times of staff absence. We can work together functionally to provide support and continue striving to, to better achieve that service excellence that we're all working really hard for.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. Are there any questions? I'm not seeing any. Okay.
Make one question, but through you.
Counselor Nagy.
I, I think, also I think I've heard you say in the past that it also provides opportunities for succession plans, these additional. I just thought I'd say that.
Except nobody who's currently working wants to think about succession plans. Mr. Payne.
Thank you, worship. We're going to move to the police budget now. And I'm going to invite the police chief up to have this discussion with us. And it will be. And it will be on page 38 of the published financial plan. So we're going to start with, I'm going to invite the chief to discuss some of the achievements and accomplishments from 2019 and also some of the plans for 2020. And then I will discuss the budget and some of its variances. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we've actually, we've seen the budget previously in the, at the end of last year as well for, for consideration. So this is a little bit of a rehash, but a little bit of an update. So thank you, Mr. Brenton. Chief Brenton.
Thank you. I won't go into too much detail here, but as was mentioned earlier by some of the other areas within the, the district, you know, our, our bread and butter is really response to calls, 911, conducting investigations, that type of thing, which obviously keeps us fully engaged. But on top of that, we try to meet our three priorities that the community has identified, which is, sorry.
Just in case anybody's watching at home, this is page 36 on the financial plan. If people are looking for the, for the page number to follow along. Sorry, go ahead, Chief Brenton.
Sure. So, yeah, and then there's the three sort of priorities that we work on as identified through the, through the community. And one of that is, is traffic. So we've done a number of traffic initiatives this year. You'll notice that the province has rolled out e-ticketing, which allows us, our members to basically scan driver's licenses from the car. There's a printer that prints out the ticket, that sort of thing. But the long-term goal of that is the driving record is updated immediately. And then also it allows for some analysis. We spent, we're quite proud of the work that's been done in the local schools in the, in the community. And that includes playing a role in sort of a regional coordination of, of activities within the schools. And as you know, we, this is our first year with ECOM. And, or just finished our first year with ECOM. There's some, like anything new, there's still some things we're working through that. But that was a big initiative in 2019. And we've hired three additional police officers in 2019. And interestingly, we, we actually adopted Office 365. So you need any references, you can come and talk to us in 2019. And with that, it allowed us to update our intranet, which is the internal system, which will help with a number of our business practices and that sort of thing. And the, and the security part of it was a big driver behind going to Office 365. Coming up on, we also settled the collective agreement in 2019. In the new year, we'll continue with initiatives towards our three priorities and continue with training and that sort of thing already in 2020 because we are a month plus into it. We've adopted the new, and developed policies around the new police service standards for police stops and street checks, that type of thing. We're anticipating two sergeants promotions. The, the competition is currently underway as we speak. And as was mentioned earlier, there's going to be the, the annual police board conference for all BC police boards is actually held in Oak Bay in partnership. Oak Bay and Sanage Police Boards are co-organizers of that this year.
Counselor Breathwaite?
Thank you. And through you, Chair. I was looking on page 36 at the performance measure, measures and statistics. And I noticed that the 2020 forecast is a decrease in overall file count by about 5% from the previous year. So, and it's in interesting spots where it's going to decrease. So I just wonder if you could maybe touch on that.
So the forecast, I'll be the first to say it, isn't the most scientific method. Basically, I took the average of the three years and that's, it's, you know, in policing, it's a really hard thing to, to predict, you know, what, what it's going to be in 2020. Obviously, you always want it to decrease. But as you will see, we did actually see some increase in, in 2019 over the previous year. I think if you average it out, it, it's not quite as significant as, but it's still something that we need to pay attention to.
I see that your ticketing is going to increase by a little bit. So that's maybe where you're going to get some extra money.
If only it came to us. Yes. Counselor Ne?
Well, I actually, through you, Chair, I was just going to ask you, Chief, just to help me understand one of the metrics that Counselor Breathwaite just brought up around the ticket warning. So given your, you have ramped up the traffic thing in the past. The actual ticket warnings and violations went down in 2019. How do you, help me understand?
Yeah, well, when we say ramp it up, it means that we, we run traffic check stops, that type of thing. It doesn't mean that we're necessarily always going to be, in fact, our, doesn't mean we're going to be issuing tickets, but we're, we're out there and in some ways that's a deterrent. The more people that, the more that we're seen, you know, visibly running radar in school zones, the more we're seen. In some cases, it actually has a deterrent value to it.
So that, that's actually a factor. That's actually what I was getting at here. It's, it's gone down. The explanation you're providing us is that being more visible in the community has got people driving better. I mean, it could possibly be.
It plays a role. Yeah, there, there's lots of factors. I would like to think that that does play a role, but there could be other things that.
One other metric I was thinking of, I, I know the police have been quite involved in helping us with our block watch program. And I've been curious what the status of that is. I'm, I'm just wondering if that would be a metric you would consider including here. And I, I'm not sure how active policing is involved in continuing that activity in the, in the, in the community.
Yeah, I don't know how we, I, I can't say that we continually, it continually grows every year. I believe there was, you know, this is just off the top of my head, there was probably an initial six groups that formed this year. We're probably sitting around 59, 60 groups in, in a community of our size is actually quite remarkable.
They're great community builders, so.
Yeah. And one thing I should point out is we have our own strategic plan, for lack of a better word. It is a strategic plan, a five-year plan. It's not aligned with the, the, the years of the municipal strategic plan. We report out on that quarterly with a year-end report. And there's a, there's a lot of, these are only things that I put into this report just as sort of, these crime types or activity types, I'll call them a sort of a barometer that generally tell you what the situation is within the community. There's a lot of other things that are actually reported out on that, on our sort of internal strategic plan.
And just one more question, Mr. Mayor, to the chief. The metric you're using, and I do appreciate this is just for this report and there may be other places that these are reported. But the issue of assaults, and you've got them identified common with weapon and then sexual. And given all the, the challenges we've had with sexual assault reporting within police forces, not this one specifically by any means, but is there any value in separating out the sexual assault?
I, I can. Yeah, there, again, in our strategic plan, it is separated out. I just grouped them to try to keep a contained list.
Okay, I, if, if it's there, I, I mean, I, I, it's really, I'm just asking the question to you. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Ne. Counselor Green, then Counselor Patterson?
Thank you through you, Mayor, to the chief. Thank you very much for the report. Chief Brenton, can you give me some examples of that last item, which is assist the general public? I can imagine, but I was just interested, I think, for the information of the public, what assisting might look like. Thank you.
So it's a real catch-all. It's for, it's activities that we're engaged in that don't necessarily, there, there's no statistic, statistic Canada crime type that's associated to it. There actually often isn't even a crime. We often, or if we go to a call where, say, someone feels their house is being broken into, it's not actually being broken into. It could be, you know, a senior who perhaps is confused, that type of thing. So it's, it's sort of a catch-all. And you'll see it's actually fairly high in Oak Bay, but I think we pride ourselves in being, you know, all things to all people kind of thing. That's one of the, one of our, what we think we bring to the table here.
No call too small. Isn't that the?
That's true.
And, and it's a good one. I appreciate that. And I also know the traffic. Have, have you found traffic to be more daunting in terms of violations and speeding and that kind of thing? Excuse me.
I don't, I don't think so. And I believe, you know, our, our collision level of collisions is pretty constant. You know, it's a fairly low number to start with. That's 130 and that's, that's all types of collisions, including, you know, anything that's reportable over 5,000 is pretty constant. So we certainly field a lot of calls from residents of concerns for traffic. We try to address those the best we can. Sometimes, to be quite frank, we do find that in a lot of times it's perception versus actual speeding, that sort of thing. But it's still something that we, we put resources towards.
Thank you. And just one last comment. I really appreciate the weekly media releases. I find those really helpful. Sometimes I don't want to know as much as I know, but it, it really is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for this report. Just noticed the one line, mental health, the number of issues that are listed for that. And I'm wondering how much time our police officers would have to allocate to deal with actual like mental health problems in the community?
It, it can be, in some cases, it, it can be significant. Ie. if we end up apprehending under the Mental Health Act and have to accompany to the hospital, we're often there for, you know, in cases, it can be up to two hours at times. That is a problem within policing universally. I can say there is a committee, a joint committee between police and health that are trying to work on those types of issues as we speak, and we have representation on that.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Chief Brenton. And I think this is probably the one area that we don't have a lot of options on the budget in this piece, but it's always helpful to have you come to the table periodically and just get some, some updates and clarification of what's going on in the policing world. So thank you very much. Mr. Payne?
Your worship, I wouldn't be afraid of the police board. You can pick a fight with them if you want. First, I'd like to start out just by pointing, there are some differences between the proposed budget here that staff have put together in, in cooperation with the chief and will probably result in an amended request from the police board to the tune of approximately $86,000. A lot of that relates to a sharp increase in WorkSafe BC rates, which is related to mental order presumption and as well as our, our actual activity. And also additional pension and other benefits that, that were related to the underfunding of the strength size from previous year. So we refined those numbers and we've provided them to, to the chief and we'll work together to bring an amended request. Recall, you, you may recall from the first presentation in November that there was a significant increase projected. That increase is about $300,000 and that doesn't include collective, potential collective agreement increase, pardon me. $142,000 of that was related to the strength underfunding from last year. So I'm actually looking at this chart here for reference. $27,000 of that is related to new funding for additional civilian support. And then the remainder, $137,000, we would classify as forced growth. Another important difference to the, to the layout of, of this that differs from the police for presentation is the removal of the transfer to reserves. That hasn't been removed from the budget. It has been reclassified elsewhere in the budget. However, I had a good discussion with Chief Brenton today, and we think the presentation should be consistent. So we're going to work on probably version three, providing that presentation in here. So we have approximately $148,000 in transfers to reserves. Some of that is for police capital, for vehicles. Some of it is for retirement allowance. Some of it is for the major crimes reserve. So that's not shown here. It is represented in the consolidated financial plan, so it's still funded. It's just not there. So that really summarizes the, my presentation on the variances. If there's any, if there isn't any questions, we'll move on to the fire department.
I'm not seeing any. Nope. Good. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Thank you, Chief Brenton.
Your worship, Chief Hughes is here to discuss some of the accomplishments from 2019 and the plans for 2020. And then again, I'll, I'll be happy to discuss some of the budget variances afterwards.
Through the chair, some of our 2019 accomplishments, as you can see here, we began painting the exterior, which is pretty much the whole exterior of the fire station. Looks a lot, lot brighter black or darker blacks and lighter whites there on the station now. We renewed our fire dispatch contract with Sanage Fire Department, and that's a five-year contract. We acquired our new emergency support services trailer, and that was through grant funding through our emergency program, as well as began to prepare the emergency evacuation plan that's been carried over into this year, 2020, in which time, as we work into 2020 planned accomplishments, we're looking at another $25,000 grant as well. So hopefully we'll be successful on that one. And that all has to do with the emergency evacuations from the District of Oak Bay, but in cooperation with our surrounding communities as well. We have, as I reported to before, a few years ago, replacing our emergency generators. They're really old. We're looking to replace those for reliable power supply. Supporting our fire department health and wellness program, I, I can't speak enough to this. And as we get down to where we're looking at overtime budgets and things like that, it's, it's crucial. We've had our program going for about six years that we tend to, and are very proactive with people from, from all areas, mind, body, spirit, to make sure people are as healthy as they can be. Our firefighter training program, that's one of the biggest things that we do, is train, train and, and more training to meet all our required expectations in our various areas of expertise, whether it be confined space rescue, medical aid or firefighting itself. We're upgrading grade three emergency education program, and that's in a bit of a transition. And we'll be looking at providing that EOC training for staff, senior staff, as well as, again, continue to work on that evacuation plan. We've got lots of other things that are on the go, but I'll, I'll leave the, that level of detail for, I think, for the, for the annual report when we report out on all the things that we've accomplished in the past year.
Thank you, Chief. I have questions from Counselors Zelka and Counselor Breathwaite.
Thank you very much, Chair. Just a very brief question. Just, I need to understand what this means. What is a work order management and with respect to infrastructure in particular?
Oh, so the work order management, there was some wordsmithing done, I believe, from Sina here. So it morphed a little bit, but it had, it had to do more with internal processes and our, our mechanical division and other reports internally to the fire department.
Apologies. So when you say mechanically, you mean like repairs to the fire trucks or is this?
Yes, and we have, we have work orders. We do, we do up because they are commercial vehicles. We have to abide by the National Safety Code. And we're in communication with Public Works Yard as our primary inspection facility all the time.
Thank you. Counselor Breathwaite?
Thank you. And through you, Chair. Similar question to what I asked the police chief. I noticed that some, your forecast is about, up about 8% for your medical and up about 22% for your fire. So is that like the police department, an average of over the years? Or do you have something else that you're basing that on?
So as far as the fires go, it very, very, very difficult to say. But what we do is within those, within those calls, we have other types of emergencies. Those are all, we could use sort of the fire rescue, all those things. And we do utilize and I have utilized an average over the past five years for that number for the forecast. As far as the 2020 forecast on medical aid, that's a, an educated guess based on how the resource allocation protocols are utilized through the province for dispatching our medical aid calls. are utilized through the province for dispatching our medical aid calls, and, uh, that's my best estimate.
Thank you. And just, uh, one follow-up. Um, under your, um, response time for within under five minutes, I mean, that's pretty amazing to have an eighty-eight percent response time and with an, under five minutes. How does that, it says that then the standard is ninety percent, but within Victoria, is that, uh, about average, or is it a little bit better than average?
I'm going to, um, just put a correction in here for a second. My Director of Finance, uh, through the charts, is trying to get us going even faster here. Uh, the, we actually have, uh, the NFPA standard is, uh, eighty seconds, uh, eighty seconds for, um, the dispatch portion. And then four minutes for the actual wheels rolling section. So it's actually five minutes and twenty seconds, and we will append that. But yes, we're well within that. Uh, most fire departments, and you can see our average is down below. Uh, most fire departments do adhere, uh, to NF P seventeen, uh, seventeen-ten. Uh, it, it's certainly the benchmark, uh, to shoot for, and that all has to do with structure fires, how quickly we're there when, uh, flashover happens, occupant survivability, et cetera. And we will be looking, uh, with further into, uh, you know, mutual aid agreements and tweaking those agreements to make sure that our, our very northern and southern borders are taken care of. We already have Sanage in the north, which is helping with our numbers, and we're really hoping that we can make some, uh, some headway in the southern end with our other partner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Zelka.
Uh, thank you again. Um, I, I see that, uh, you track, uh, the number of responses to U V I C. Is, uh, Camoson College also tracked, just out of curiosity, or any other sort of a large, uh, um, industri- uh, institutional organization?
Chief Hughes.
Uh, so no, uh, co- we do track, uh, the University of Victoria, just because we do have, uh, responsibilities for half, uh, half of that building. Uh, we do respond, uh, to Camoson College as part of the, uh, Sanage Panhandle with our mutual aid partners there. Uh, we, we don't track them. Uh, they're not nearly, uh, as numerous, uh, just due to the large population at the University of Victoria.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Chief.
Worship, may I? Thank you. Uh, I'll start with a, with another, uh, small correction. The total staff for both twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, twenty-eight. Uh, so you would, you would think your CFO could, could add that up, but unfortunately I put, uh, twenty-seven there. So thank you for that, uh, correction. Uh, so I'll, I'll discuss, uh, here, the, the main variance here is the firefighter force, which is the, uh, the bulk of the, uh, departmental costs. And you see that there's a five-point-eight percent, uh, forecast increase, which is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The bulk of that is really funding for the stat holiday pay. Um, you'll recall from the financial plan amendment presentation in, uh, December, uh, we found that that, that wasn't funded. It is a, uh, uh, twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five operation, which means that folks do work on the, on the stat holidays, and that had been inadvertently omitted. So that's a hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we're proposing an increase to overtime of about forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we've been working with the chief to determine what, what really is a sustainable overtime budget. The, the, even with this additional forty-nine thousand dollars, the twenty nineteen overtime budget exceeded that, um, by close to fifty thousand dollars as well. So we're not sure if this is a sustainable amount, but the chief is, um, has, has been, uh, working closely to, uh, changes operations such that overtime will be a, as needed. So if you, if you want more specific comments from that, Chief, Chief Hughes would, would be happy. So even if we had, um, increased the overtime budget by forty-nine thousand dollars, but we weren't subject to having to put the stat holiday pay funding it, that would have been a two-point-seven percent overall increase to the budget, which is pretty good. Without the, uh, without the, um, overtime budget, we would have just had forced growth of one-point-one percent, which, which is pretty good for a, a career, uh, firefighter station. Part of that is, is assisted by the fire vehicles and equipment expense dropping by eighteen-point-seven percent. And that's because of an expiry of a M F A loan we have for, for one of the apparatus. Uh, typically what we do is we take those, uh, uh, again, we would take the, um, I'll call it debt retirement and increase the funding for sustainable infrastructure. But since we are, um, increasing infrastructure funding at such a rapid pace, it's really a drop in the bucket in terms of progress. So I just, I didn't do anything with it. It, it really softened the, the overall increase to, uh, the finance department budget. So that concludes the fire department budget presentation.
I, I have one question. I'm not seeing any others. I just, uh, and maybe this isn't answerable here, but is there anything we could? Uh, I'm just getting too, probably too far into operation, so maybe just answer it or not. But, uh, are there any mechanisms by which we can, uh, cultivate a, like a feeder system for the firefighting force? Where we have sort of casuals or auxiliary staff, uh, available to bring in for, to cover some of these, uh, urgent shifts as available? Um, to help sort of offset some of the, um, the overtime costs?
Uh, your worship, uh, through the chair, I, I'll answer that through what I'm currently doing right now. We do have provision, uh, to bring on temporary employees. And in fact, I, I just engaged one on the third, so, uh, February. So we have very rarely done that, and, uh, this is only the second time that, in my twenty-eight years that we've done that. And so that's an attempt, and an attempt to, uh, help reduce the overtime staffing. I wouldn't want to get into a discussion with, uh, those other options at, at this, at this table. But generally, I could say they're, they're very, very challenging in our line of work. And even a temporary, uh, person, just with the amount of training, equipment, and the type of people that we hire, uh, it's challenging. But we are exercising the one, option that already exists within the, uh, collective agreement we have with the union.
Great. Thank you very much for that answer. Any other questions at this time? All right. Thank you. Mr. Payne, back to you.
So thank you, Worship. That, that will wrap up, uh, today. Preview of, uh, uh, the thirteenth, so that's seven days from now. We'll have a, a discussion about some of the operating revenues, and then we'll discuss the remaining o- o- operating budget. So that'll, the timing should be pretty similar. Um, there's some significant operating budgets, uh, on deck for next week. The Parks, Rec and Culture Budget, as well as the Engineering, uh, Budget, um, and Building and Planning. So thank you very much, uh, for your time today. We look forward to discussing further next week.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Is there any other final questions before we depart? All right, seeing none. I would just, uh, in our agenda next week, uh, it's probably worth, just, if anybody's interested in a single item, uh, to include in the agenda, we can just put in there the actual departments or things that are going through in that order, so people can, maybe it's time their arrival if they have a specific interest. Specifically, if we're sort of encouraging public to come next week. That's it, I believe. Uh, unless there's anything else from staff before we go? Anything else that staff want to raise before we adjourn? Or can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move the agenda.
Move in second. If all is in favor, opposed, not opposed. Thank you.